Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Select Board's meeting 6/28/21. This meeting is being recorded.
First up, we have a moment of silence.
Mr. Chairman, it's with sadness that I announced the passing of John Sednicki. John was active on our open space planning committee. I had the pleasure of working with him this last couple of years. He's a true gentleman, someone who cared very deeply for his community and open space. So if we could please have a moment of silence for John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first up is public comment. As you folks know, this is your time to say what you'd like to say. Please have your name and your address for the record. I would appreciate that. And I think the easiest way to do it is we'll start with the front row and work our way back, only because as people come in, they'd be in the back anyways. So anyone on the front row have anything they would like to say? Row two. Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Marrow, 301 Southwick. And I want to know, what is the benefit to letting Carvana build a distribution center here? I also want to know, what is your vision for the future so we can make our plans whether or not we go along with it?
Thank you. Anyone else in row two? Sure?
Mike Willard, 16th class of the circle, Chair of the Planning Board. I just wanted to, especially in advance of tomorrow's meeting, speak up and just mention, you know, this has gone long. I've been following along on social media and the posts and back and forth, and it has been rather concerning to me, the level of vitriol and personal attacks. And, you know, I think that in this town, we can agree on different things and we can have conversations about different things. But, you know, I will speak for the select board since we're at the select board meeting and suggest that these folks here on the select board have given a significant amount of their time to help this community out going along with their, you know, regular jobs and family commitments. So I would hope that going forward, both on social media and at the meetings as we attend them, that people are a little bit more introspective about what they say and think about, you know, the folks that they're saying against them.
Thank you. That's it for row two. Row three. We'll start with the gentleman on the left. Nope, this will be easier.
Amy Gale, Point River Road. Questions on the Westfield Bridge. On your agenda, you have a whole business item that says, "The Select Board are requesting a joint meeting with the DOT regarding the destruction of a bridge in Westfield. This has been on there for some time with no updates. Can you tell us if this requested meeting has anything to do with the Bailey project? And if so, what that requested meeting is about?"
Okay, thank you. Next.
Diana Gale. The owners, officers, and directors of Carvana have been accused of, and in some cases charged and found guilty of, some of the following. Class action suits of unfair competition, targeting subprime borrowers, burying them in debt, and repossessing the car. Debt collection harassment, consumer loan fraud, deceptive advertising, unfair trade practices. They've been found guilty of bank fraud. Failing to report felony convictions to the SEC. Abusive shareholder profit practices and insider trading.
Recording in progress.
These are just a few of the allegations. In our bylaws, character is a very frequent criterion, and character has many meanings, including physical as well as moral qualities. The bylaws can be read to mean both of those. My questions are, did the select board do any due diligence in research to character, profitability, and reputation of this company upon learning that it was Carvana? If so, does this mean that the select board condones these characteristics when they vote in to endorse the project to the planning board? And are Southwick officials actively seeking additional less-than-stellar businesses to come in to be reasonably compatible in character to this one? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Carter Valley, and I do have a question. The question is, for the water usage for this Carvana, you're saying 9,000 gallons a day. But it's my understanding that the water commissioner has denied this. So what is their avenue now and whatever can we take against it to not have them move forward? That is my question. Because I don't think it's fair that we have a water ban and we won't be able to water the tank, water our ponds, but yet Carvana can wash all these cars? I don't think it's fair. So what's your take on that?
Thank you. Anyone else in row three? No, so we'll go to row four.
Engle Hotel, 45 Main Road. And first I want to applaud you for your services to our town, but I also have a concern as the town electives, have you really done your due diligence in regards to looking at supporting this special project? My concern as we of the people is that the evidence that's been fed to our community has been fed to us by Carvana. And I'm requesting that you do your due diligence and request an independent test on not only traffic, but water and lighting, and have this done independently so that we can make a decision based on evidence and not solely by what we've been told. Thank you.
Good evening. Marisa Kukobregon, 126 Southland Street. At the informal meeting of citizens in the land use room on June 16th, Mr. Moplin stated unofficially that the estimated tax revenue for this facility will be approximately $900,000 annually. Were any financial projections done to determine the incremental costs of the town for things such as additional wear and tear on roads, increased police traffic patrols, sewer and water upgrade needs that were revealed by this project, and other stresses on the town's infrastructure? If so, did this analysis reflect a surplus or a deficit from their tax revenues? If this has been done, are those projections part of the public record? If no projections were done, what is the reason for not doing this? If I may ask one more question. Is the select board aware of any other parties interested in moving into either of the two industrial restricted zones in Southwick at this time or within the next two years? If so, what are the potential businesses and potential uses being proposed? Is the select board or any other board commission, including the Economic Development Commission, actively soliciting any other potential occupants for either of the two industrial restricted zones in Southwick at this time? Or have plans to reach out to any businesses in the next two years? If so, what are the potential businesses and potential uses being solicited?
Thank you.
Gregory Scott, 126 Southland Street. I have two questions. Has the Commonwealth of Massachusetts offered incentives, special funding, or aid packages of any type to the town relative to approving permits and allowing Carvana to build their projects here? If so, what are those? And second question, has the town sought, proposed, applied for, or qualified for any incentives, special funding, or lending terms, or any other aid packages of any type from any department of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, directly or indirectly, as related to the Bailey project? Or as a result of the incremental infrastructure pressures that will ultimately be placed on the town from this project? If so, what were those? Thank you.
Cindy Marshall, 45 Colesville Road. Joe, Russ, Doug, how could you do this to our town? How can you support this project that is going to change this town forever? Your town, our town, my town. I'm really, really disappointed. Thank you.
Hi, Suzanne Slavota, 43 Congamon Road. I was curious about what would possibly be some of the industrial restrictions placed upon the property if it goes forward? About ground restrictions placed upon the property if it goes forward? What their exit plan would be if they go forward to protect our community? Remember when the last car place, big car place went out of town, left the big sucking winds out behind it? So what's their exit strategy? Do they go under or do they just decide to leave? And then also, do they have a carbon neutral plan? And if so, what is it?
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jason Giger from 10 Cedar Street, apartment five. I have two questions to ask the board. The owners, officers, and directors of Carvana have been accused of, in some cases charged and found guilty of, some of the following. Class action suits of unfair competition, targeting subprime borrowers, borrowing them in further debt who were repossessing cars. Debt collection and harassment, consumer loan fraud, deceptive advertising, unfair trade practices. They've been found guilty of bank fraud. Failing to report felony convictions to the SEC. Abusive shareholder profit practices and insider trading. These are just some of the allegations. In our bylaws, character is a very frequent criterion, and character has many meanings, including physical as well as moral qualities. The bylaws can be read to mean both of these. My questions are, did the select board do any due diligence in research in the character of profitability and reputation of this company upon learning that it was Carvana? If so, does this mean that the select board condones these characteristics when they vote to endorse the project or the planning board? And are Southwick officials actively seeking additional less-than-stellar businesses to come in to be reasonably comparable or compatible in character to this one? And my next question. As you know, on Saturday, June 26th, the peaceful rally in opposition to Carvana took place in front of the town hall with well over 150 citizens present at any one time. We were also raised with a northbound, southbound drive-by of a Carvana corporate car in its full colors during our rally. As they drove through, they were observed by the citizens taking video, gesturing with money they'd thrown about the interior of the car. This was a very blunt message from a less-than-stellar company who has a record of harassing behavior and intimidation, letting us know in no uncertain terms that they are in our town and that we are wasting our money trying to prevent this. This behavior is in complete disregard for the citizens of this town that they will invade. If this is how they will treat the citizens that they want to welcome them, what arm twisting will we face in the future once they are here? There are numerous articles evidencing how poorly disregarded the communities are where these, where they have these processing facilities and how they're negative, or how negatively impacted they are forevermore. I would respectfully like to call on each selectman to state their reaction to the imposition on the intimidating actions taken by Carvana on Saturday, and enlighten these actions to state if they are indeed in favor of this project and reasons why. Thank you.
Grammy Devonow, 305 College Highway. So I am interested to learn if this facility will have its own security. Are any of the jobs that are slated for this site, are security guards? And if so, how many, and will they be 24/7? I am also curious if this facility will have its own cafeteria, excuse me, or kitchen? And if so, what is the capacity of the cafeteria? How many jobs will be related to cafeteria and food services? If no cafeteria will be on-site, will food trucks be allowed on-site? And also, will this site have shower and outdoor facilities for the car hauler drivers similar to truck stops? And if so, how many jobs will be related to janitorial services for the showering facilities and other similar cleaning needs not related to shop cleaning? And I also want to say that what I feel that the select board has forgotten is, as much as the people in this room and everybody else in this town is a part of this town, this town is also a part of us. So anything that you change in this town in Southwick, you change within us as well. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? So now I guess we're going to figure out this online.
Sue Brasca.
Sue Brasca. So you want them to, do they speak through it?
Yep, we should be able to hear them when they speak.
Hi, Sue.
She's just got to unmute herself.
Yeah, I'm muted.
Thank you.
One thing. I'm disappointed in our select board. That's it.
Thank you.
James Wong.
James?
Wong.
James Wong.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Southwick is at a critical point right now, and this is something that was brought on because we didn't know what was going on. So this critical point in the next few weeks is going to determine the future of Southwick. If Carvana gets in and changes the face of Southwick to be an industrial car lot, that opens the door for all other industrial companies that may want to come in here. The precedent will have been set. Those of us who live in Southwick chose to live here because of its agricultural community, because of its outdoor activities, because it's a small New England town. So to allow Carvana to come in and change the face and the future of Southwick is just a terrible thing that we have to face, and we should not allow Carvana in there because if Carvana does come in, it will no longer be Southwick. It will be the biggest industrial park in western Massachusetts. Thank you.
We're just looking to see if there's anyone else on Zoom.
That's it. Amy, there's an, I can't read it. It's Amy Adowski, says she can't hear very well over the Zoom. Apologize for that. And her question is, I live on 71 Tannery Road. Traffic is already horrible on our street. I've had numerous accidents in front of my house. To me, Carvana and the number of additional cars and trucks that'll be going down our street will make it much worse. There are so many people walking down our street and riding bikes to go to the bike path. This sounds very dangerous. That's what she wrote.
Thank you. That's it?
That is awesome.
Okay. I'll chime in there.
There's someone that has their hand up, and they don't have a name though, it just says LG Stylofor.
It's Nancy Brasca, 12 Hillside Road.
Go ahead, Nancy.
First of all, I do want to also say how disappointed I am with our select board. I'd also like to know why this was under the Bailey project, and the residents in Southwick were not informed, and it was so secretive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment. We're going to move on. Thank you for coming. Next up is our action item at 6:15, which will be... Oh, let's do the payable, let's do the payable payrolls first. Acknowledged special payable warrant 2131B dated 6/22/21, and the amount of, what's it, huh? $1,523.
You want the wire? We'll get it for you. One sec.
I'm usually pretty loud.
It's, the room is backwards. The acoustics are probably, that's good.
Yep. I'll just lay it there. Hello? No, I'm not old, but, all right. Okay, so we're doing the payables, payroll, and minutes. Acknowledgement special payable warrant 2131B dated 6/22/21, and the amount of $1,523. That's a new record for low. Acknowledged payroll warrant 2128 dated 6/22/2021, and the amount of, that's better, Ah, let's see, minutes, open session dated 6/14/21. I need a motion for those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion. Russ Fox.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
Okay, and next up is executive session minutes dated 6/14/2021. I need a motion for those.
Mr. Chairman, Russ Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
Okay, so 6:15, Attorney Frank Caruso regarding Krabby Joe's liquor license transfer to Ken's Lakeside Plaza LLC. Come on up, gentlemen. I'm going to read this first. Do we have to open it first? I can read it first and then open it.
I'll open it for you, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to open.
Mr. Chairman, Russ Fox will open the hearing.
Second.
Okay, so do we have to? Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moplin, aye.
All right. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws that Ken's Lakeside Plaza LLC has applied for a transfer of the on-premises alcohol license at Skidery Inc., DBA Krabby Joe's at 141 Congamon Road, Southwick, Mass. Previously owned by Skidery Inc. Manager on record is Justin Scott Waterman. Property description, building consists of first floor, five rooms. Cellar is one room with a bar, extending the dining room area 600 feet, 600 square feet in the back, which includes three decks and one terrace. Alterations of the premise to increase serving area from 10,427 square feet to 11,714 square feet in the former boathouse. The proposed hearing will accomplish a transfer of said license from Skidery Inc. to Ken's Lakeside Plaza LLC. Approve new manager, Kenneth E.
Eggleston.
Eggleston?
Eggleston.
Thank you. Establish entertainment license, establish and maintain same serving hours as previous license. Time and date of hearing is June 28th, 2021, at 6:15 in the Select Board's conference room slash auditorium located at 454 College Highway, Southwick, Massachusetts. By the Select Board acting as the license commission. Please note the Governor's termination of the CV-19 emergency order regarding meetings and the new laws to be adopted by the Mass Legislature in June will provide guidance for remote meetings going forward. All right, so that's it.
If I may make one correction, I believe it was determined that it will not actually be an expansion of the service area, that that was previously licensed. Is that correct, Robin? Then we determined it was previously licensed.
The boathouse was already licensed?
Yes.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you. I know the select board is well aware of the history of the location. The show's been trying for some time to sell it. Mr. Eggleston is the sole owner of the LLC. He's also going to be the manager of the business. He intends to run it similar to the way it was run as far as the hours, what he's serving. He previously had some experience, it's not on his resume because he's been working, he has his own, owns his own company for over 20 years. But he ran another restaurant, Alexander's Restaurant in Feeding Hills. So he does have experience. He did get recertified with tips. I can give a copy of that to the board also. Again, he does have experience in the business. He is recertified. He has told me that everyone who serves will be tips certified within a couple of weeks of being hired. He was going to be a hands-on manager. He actually lives in walking distance to the, to the location. He's five houses down on Mountain Road. He purchased the building, the business, and the license, so he's going to own everything. I've explained to him, and he understands as manager that he is responsible for everything that happens on the premises, even if he's not there at the time, and he understands that, and he's anxious to start working on the building and get it back, back up and running again.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, read any paperwork to be entered into the record? I don't have anything here.
Just the tip certification.
Yep, no, the tip certification, of course, but I have nothing from police and fire. All right, so let's start off with, ask anyone to speak in favor of the transfer of liquor licenses? Anyone here like to speak in favor of it?
It's better than Carvana.
They're going to state their name and address.
Can I get your name and address again? I'm sorry.
Cindy Marrow, Marrow Road.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Is anyone here to speak against it? There you go. All right, so general discussion by us. What do you, what's the real game plan there? I mean, is there a marina going to go in? We're running into problems in town now, I'm just going to come right out and say it, and may as well get into...
If I can speak to that?
Please. And please speak to the parking when we discuss the marina.
Mrs. Skidery did apply for a license. He went through the entire process, but he never filed it. So right now, there is no marina license. So Mr. Eggleston has had to hire engineers to redo all of the work on the marina, including the parking. Once he gets all that put together, we can then go to the state and get the approval. But the engineering work he's having done includes the marina and the parking, and it'll all be part of the package as necessary. What I think Mrs. Skidery didn't realize is, you have to file it with the, with the registry in order for it to be a proper license. He never did that. So even though he actually filled out the entire application, and he actually even did the engineering, he never filed it. So as far as the state's concerned, it never happened. So we have to start from scratch, and it's going to take some time, and some, it's very expensive too, as Mr. Eggleston can tell you, to get the engineering done right so that we can present the parking and the marina and everything to the board.
Okay, and judging by your occupancy of 150 people?
Mm-hmm.
Judging by your parking lot, right? I mean, we can all close our eyes and envision your parking lot, envision 150 people, and please tell me where I'm going to envision a marina? And I'm not here, I'm just getting this out in the open now because this shit's going to hit the fan later, so I'd rather discuss it now.
Before it can be, the engineering has to be done first.
Understood.
As far as the math goes, I can't do math, which is why I have to go to Austin.
That's why you became an attorney, I know.
Yeah, so, but I will tell you that when the plan is brought to you, it'll be, it'll be done properly.
Okay. But does it have to come to us for the marina? Seriously?
For the marina?
Yeah, I mean, once the state approves it, because that's what I'm running into now in town and not your place.
Yeah, once approved by the state, we then have to have the town hearings.
Okay.
There's a procedure with the planning board.
Understood.
That has to go through first. Yeah.
No, and we're on the same page, but we're running into issues now with other marinas in town that are or aren't, and there's no parking, and...
I was unaware of that.
Oh, I'm not. Call me anytime, and we'll discuss it. So that's not why we're here, I get that. We're here for the liquor license transfer.
Right, I understand that.
But I just want that in the open, so when you come back later and shit hits the wall, we're going to smile and go, remember that discussion about parking?
I do, and I, and I understand that there are marinas on the lake that have similar concerns and have their licenses.
Well, they're not, I don't think they have a concern, they already have their licenses and they think they're fine. But we're hitting walls now with...
I'm saying the parking concern.
Yeah, that the parking issue's everywhere, you know, and then the lake is popular, and I guess there was 100-pound trune boats parked on our beautiful north pond over the weekend, which is normal, I guess, and fine, but it's like, there's only so much room, as you guys know.
Yeah, that was not happening before the ownership of the property took place.
Well, it's all good. I'm sure they're great people, and a lot of them live on the lake. It's not like they're all coming in, we have so many spots for boats, you know, the slips, right, or the trailers? Trailers, okay. So a lot of that is just the folks on the lake.
Do we mind moving that? No, nor the...
All right, so Mr. Fox.
No, I, I think it's great.
Yeah.
Anytime we have a business reopening, you know, in these, under these economic times that we're living in, and, but I do want to emphasize to you, and your counselor knows what I'm going to be saying, we take liquor licenses very seriously, very seriously. So if, if you're going to be in that kind of business, don't break any rules. And that's all, that's all I'll say to you.
Hey, the five years that he owned Alexander's, there was never an incident.
Excellent.
Mr. Moplin.
I'll just echo what Mr. Fox said, you know, we've had others in front of us in the past with transgressions around, around that, and it's something we do take very serious. Obviously, we love to have new businesses open in town, especially reutilizing existing facility that's already standing, that'd be great. And, you know, what Joe said, you know, with the, with potential other uses, just do your math, right? It is, like you said, it is just math, right, for parking and everything else, and what you can fit into that parcel, and what you can do. And, you know...
And, you know, you know, the Planning Board has a process. They have a bylaw and they have rules with which to work under, just like any other proposed proposal that comes in front of them. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Russ Fox will make a motion to close this hearing.
Was there anyone on Zoom that had anything about this?
Nope, I'm sorry.
I don't think so. So then I'll second the motion.
Alright. Motion was made seconded. Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Alright, so now I need a motion to grant the transfer of liquor license.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul will second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
What's that?
Do you need to read the add-in to the record again?
Nope, I read it once. You fixed what we thought was wrong, and I think we're fine.
Great, thank you.
Good luck. You have a lot of work ahead of you.
A lot of renovations in that building, for sure.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up was the joint appointment of Treasurer, Collector, Clerk by Select Board and Assessor. Chairman of the Finance Committee, Chairperson per Select Act.
Did step forward?
Yeah, who's here? Come on in.
And Al Hoyt.
Al Hoyt?
Does Michelle wanna come down?
Michelle, would you like to step up here? Nope, she's all set where she's at. How are you guys doing today?
Good.
Good. Carl, what do we need for this?
The Special Act just calls for a, a vote by the Board, the three Board of Select person members, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, and the Chairperson of the Finance Committee, act to jointly appoint the individual who holds the combined positions. So as you took care of all the appointed officials and department heads in the last several weeks, this is another one you have to do, but it involves other people from other boards assisting you with that vote.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, Russ Fox would make the motion to appoint Michelle Hill.
Linda Baffo, second.
Alright. All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Linda Baffo, aye.
Al Hoyt, aye.
Thank you. That's it. Have a great night, folks. Okay, for the Chair to ratify and sign the four PVPC CB, CDBG releases of liens for seven Rainey Avenue, 21 Bonneview, and two for 15 Matthews Road. Is that all set?
Yep, just need your motion.
Mr. Chairman, Russ Fox will make the motion to authorize the Chair to sign those.
Doug Mogul, second.
Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, sorry about that. We'll get it figured out. It's so much easier on Zoom. It is. Alright, adopt revised job description for COA Director. Have you guys looked at it? Are you happy with it?
It's just, it's more than I used to reflect changes in the court.
Okay, that's it?
Yep, it's approved by Labor Council.
Alright, I need a motion to approve?
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve the new job description for the Council on Agent Department Executive Director.
Doug Mogul will second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Alright, next up will be the Rotary Club is looking for a one-day liquor license for their concert series. And it looks like it's gonna be for the 14th, the 21st, the 28th of July, and then August 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As the town itself is a corporate member of Rotary, I believe you need to invoke the rule of necessity.
Oh, I'm not part of Rotary.
But the town, the Board of Selectmen are corporate members of the Rotary, so we need to invoke the rule of necessity in order to take said vote.
And how do we do that?
Make a motion to invoke that rule.
Make a motion to invoke that.
Russ Fox will make the motion to invoke the rule of necessity.
Doug Mogul will second that motion.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you. Alright, so back to the concert series. I gave you the dates. It looks like it's at 6:00 PM till 9:00 PM. It's gonna be at Wally Park. There will be refreshments provided. Of course, that's why they're here.
The dates are here.
Yeah, you said the dates already. Oh, yeah, well, you guys are figuring out your point of order. Alright, so I need a motion to approve.
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve the Rotary's scheduled concert series for a one-day liquor license.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Are we waiving the officer? Are we past that deal? How's that working? Anything said about the officer, Carl?
Uh, no, it was not in the request, but it's been historically done.
Waived in the past?
Yeah, in the previous summer concert series, there has never been one applied by the department, but then again, that's up to the police prerogative when they review it.
Okay, then we'll let them deal with it. Thank you. Accept resignation of Buildings and Ground Supervisor. I need a motion?
Russ Fox will make that motion to accept that resignation.
Doug Mogul, second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Alright. Regional dispatch with Westfield Executive IMA Agreement. Have you guys read this? Are we comfortable? Yeah, you've overread it. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm sorry. Alright, I need a motion to approve?
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve.
Doug Mogul will second.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay, authorize Chairperson to sign MOU with PVPC for regional energy planning assistance through Mass. DOE R. Funding.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Alright, approve FY22 DPW Goods, Services, Materials, and Project Beds. No new surprises? Nope.
Mr. Chairman, is the DPW Director online or?
I think he's on vacation.
He's on vacation.
He's on vacation, okay.
So I need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve based on the DPW Director's recommendation.
Doug Mogul will second that motion.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Hey, Joe, I am listening in. Do you want to ask any questions?
How's the vacation?
So far, so good.
Good. Enjoy yourself.
That's the downside of Zoom, right?
Yeah, it is.
It can get you anywhere.
Anything in there that I should have been worried about before I said yes to it?
No, I think the one was pretty straightforward. A lot of the same names we've seen in the past.
Yep.
A couple of new winners, but we did our due diligence and looked into them and were confident in the workout for us. I think, I think overall, if you're looking at pricing comparable to last year, the pricing is very similar, if not maybe a little bit lower than last year's pricing, in general, in energy.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, Randy.
Yep.
That actually works pretty good, when you know he's there. Alright, submission of annual social media policy form. Carl, what is this about?
All boards are just being reminded of this by, along with the opening meeting law and other types of policies, so this is something that the Select Board members are also gonna need to review and sign off and submit to our office so that all of them can be compiled.
Okay, how long before we have to get it back to you?
It would be advisable to do it within the next five to seven days.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have to submit one if you're a designated to another board or commission or just?
I think if you, if you've signed it once, you understand.
Good enough, right?
Right, because there are people on redundant boards.
Yep. Alright, new. Authorize the assignment of proceeds for 15 Gillette Avenue. Did that come new today?
Yeah, that came in last week after, this is the mighty of our planning commission.
Oh, okay.
Versus the satisfied everything they need to do under the program terms and requirements.
Yep.
So it has to be signed up by the town so there can be a discharge of lien on their real estate title.
So a motion to approve?
Yep, you're gonna authorize the Chairperson to do that.
Russ Fox will make a motion to authorize the Chairman to sign.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Approve water sewer abatement request for 515 College Highway.
Right, this was already approved by the Water Commission. So now the Select Board has to approve it in its capacity as the sewer.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Russ Fox will make that motion to approve the abatement.
Doug Mogul will second the motion.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Approve contract amendment with tie and bond for College Highway Waterline Project. I don't see Randy's up there. This is, yep, Randy?
Yes, I'm here. So this is a contract for engineering services for tie and bond. This is, at the last town meeting, the town meeting approved some funds to complete the water line improvements a couple of years ago. This last piece would be to replace the transmission main that runs from our roof pump station and every drive to the central water source connection. So this would be to rehash the design of loading ton and put it up in bid and provide all the engineering services that are required for that work.
This is the-
The water shortage is reported on this to afford this contract at the last meeting.
Right, and this is the piece from, say, Gigi Steeds to the town, to the new pump station?
Yeah, that's right.
Which we didn't have funding for two years ago, and we ran out of money, basically?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion?
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mogul will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you. Okay, approve Chair to sign PVPC MOU for Town Hall Roof Project RFP Services. And Carl, you said that was coming from leftover monies?
Yeah, it's coming from monies within it, the PVPC, just like they helped us do the tie and bond review of all the other municipal buildings a number of years ago.
Yep, okay, so it's going through the PVPC. Alright, thank you. Need a motion?
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mogul will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Thank you. Alright, so that is all I have on that agenda. Next up is new business. I have FY22 Road and Infrastructure Project Review with DPW. So probably just wanna come up with a date where we can all get together?
Do a site visit.
Oh, we'll go do a site, oh, for God's sake, visits, they get expensive. Okay. So Randy, we'll get, once you get back in town, we'll figure out a date that works for you?
That'd be great, yes. You have my, there's some lists of projects, and my list, and I'm sure you have your own list, so we can get our, get our, get our list together and figure what we wanna do.
That's great. The only complaint I ever get lately now is that road to the dump for the transfer station. That seems to be the biggest, I don't know why, they shouldn't be going fast with their trash, but that's, that seems to be the biggest one I get complaints for. So Carl, we'll come up with some dates when Randy gets back?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, under old business, the Select Board is requesting a joint meeting with DOT regarding the construction of the bridge in Westfield.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Any other new business?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't know, do you have any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one request. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen out of their gift account purchase a Purple Heart flag. We are a Purple Heart community, and August 7, 2021 is National Purple Heart Day. So I'd like to make that request.
Where are you gonna hang it?
I would suggest hanging at the town council.
Yep, alright. Mr. Mogul?
I'll second the motion.
Alright, all those in favor? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Any other new business?
No, sir.
Mr. Mogul?
No, sir.
Carl, you're good for a few. Wow, alright, now we can go to old business. The Select Board requesting a joint meeting with DOT regarding the construction of the bridge in Westfield. Didn't we get a date for that meeting? No?
Yes, the Senator has been able to facilitate a date.
Right.
Sometime in July.
Wonderful.
Will that be public knowledge?
That is just a, a visit with Mass. DOT officials.
It will be on record?
Eventually it will be, and this, and this is just my version of it, so you can pick me apart online later. Go right ahead. Basically, for a few years, we've been screaming at them for that bridge, because all the traffic is going down by the Sunnyside, and as you watch, Sunnyside is caving in. We spent 40,000 or 50,000 two years ago to patch one side, caving in again. So originally, we went screaming at them for monies to kinda, maybe they would pay to do that road over? We've gotten nowhere. It looks like they cleared out over there. If you guys drive by, you see that, so it's been cleared. I did talk to someone in town whose son-in-law, apparently their company got that job, and it's a, they're telling me it's a four- or five-year project. It's not-
2025.
2025, right, so it's not gonna be done tomorrow. So I think our, but Mr. Fox has a problem with DOT quite a bit, so we usually send him, and nothing gets really resolved. They just a lot of arguing. So we are gonna send Mr. Fox again, and that's just what it is. We just kinda stay in their face and say, hey, we're still here in Southwick. Yes, we have a road issue. Yes, they finally let the fire trucks and the ambulances, I believe, go over them now. And that was their biggest problem at first because they weren't allowing that. So, as you know, we gotta get the noble every once in a while.
Mr. Didi, to that point, our ambulance did get an exception to go over that bridge, but Westfield cannot bring their ladder south of Cowell's Bridge. So Southwick Fire is covering the south end of Westfield as a first responder for that until that bridge is complete. But that, we had a previous meeting with Mass. Highway and Mass. DOT two years ago, two-plus years ago, it was pre-COVID, pre-COVID with them to try to expedite that project. I mean, the state's just horrible with bridges. You can see the one at Little River now. They've got barricades up there, so that's, you know, gonna be on the radar soon. But last I spoke with the Ward Three representative, he told me that they're still on track for a 2025 opening for the Cowell's Bridge.
Thank you, so, there you have it. Okay, next up, road name change, Southwood Hill Road to Iron Horse Hill?
Yeah, Town Council's gonna be working with Chief Landis on that to finalize the details for that hearing.
Okay, so it's still in the attorney's hands. Green energy program with town fuel-efficient vehicle policy.
Right, we're waiting.
Oh, boy.
We're waiting from PVPC some information to finalize that policy. We did get the information needed from some municipal departments, but we're just waiting for one more to submit its info to the agency.
Okay, so we're still waiting for information on that?
Yep, and then that'll come to you at some point, and again, that's a requirement under that green energy designation program that we're entered into.
Yes, it is. We're gonna have our hands full with that, but it's all good. Tighter houses, I- houses, I guess. All right. Opening on the historical commission, there's a vacancy. So anybody in row three looking to step up? That's your row? No? Okay. Just checking.
I don't know. Do you want me to?
I, I, I think you can send an email to the town of Southwick if you guys are seriously interested. And I think we have some other, what other openings do we have?
What other ODC you have?
Ag, EDC, you name them. One alert board we got opens.
Russell's where I have my...
Ah, you, it's a two-way street.
I have no problem.
Cultural Council.
Cultural Council.
You name it.
The planning board's going to need people for this.
I'm allowed to do it.
We have a master plan committee starting.
Right. We finally funded that.
That was funded in the town meeting in May.
Yep.
We'll publish a list for you.
Fine. Go ahead.
We'd love to have you.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yep.
Actually. And then we have, next up, the Russ Fox Memorial Medical Building vacancy. How are we making out with that, Russ?
Mr. Chairman, they have not gotten, gotten back to me yet. We've just talked over the phone. I'm going to follow it up with another phone call and see if there's any interest whatsoever. Working with another, another...
Hospital.
Hospital.
Yep. Thank you. And then we have the school board committee vacancy, which I think we have a...
That's been posted, correct?
I believe so.
Well, it's, yeah, that we're looking at the, either sometime the end of July or... So they're going to be, they're soliciting the candidates, and then you're going to have a joint meeting to do interviews.
So let me ask you, is the opening still open for them?
Yes, it's still open.
So school committee is another spot that they're looking for someone. So...
I'm glad that I'll make the decision. He wants to...
Yeah, that's already posted.
Yep.
Thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it.
102 Mort Vining Road Dog Hearing Disposition.
You've marked that up for a hearing on July 12th, so it's going to be scheduled.
For July 12th? Wonderful. That'll be a wonderful evening. All right. Appointments for town boards and committees. Do you want to look at that again tonight? Do you want to wait?
Mr. Chairman, I think that Mr. Moblin said we're going to be publishing a, a list, and we have a good crowd here tonight. Maybe we can get some interest going, and maybe the news media will help us try to promote it. You know, there's a ton of openings. We'd like to get more people involved.
All right. Thank you. Anything else for old business that I don't see?
No, sir.
Anything else for old business?
No, sir.
Send me online. Oh, you're good. All right. Oh, I can't believe it, but that's it?
Oh, wait. We got one.
Oh, whoa.
Just a nomination to cut. Amber Bach is saying that Cassandra Bach of Ten Pine Noah would like to fill the historic committee vacancy.
So tell Amber Bach.
Cassandra, could you have her send an email to who she sent it to? To Robin? To Robin at Town Hall?
Wonderful. Along with anyone else?
Anyone else.
So my understanding is that's it for tonight? I don't see anything. Is there an executive session?
No, there's no, we're still waiting for something, so we can't.
Okay. So that's going to conclude this evening's meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Moblin will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor. Joe DeDe, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And Doug Moblin, aye. Thank you.
Good night, folks. Thanks for coming out.[1786.54]